...throughout the state. One of those watersheds was what we call the Little Spokane River watershed aquifer. Basically, that is the northern end of Spokane County all the way up to Stevenson, Ponderay County. It extends in both of those counties. And so, what that means is that water is limited and that the stream has a priority to water to be able to maintain aquatic life. This determination was made by the state. County fought it. We lost. Courts have defended the right of the state to establish inflow stream rules and it's been litigated and so it's one of the things we are forced to live with. The unfortunate thing is that it limits the amount of development that can happen in not only northern part of Spokane County, but it also impacts Stevenson or Stevenson, Ponderay as well. To address this, back in 2013, we started to work with the Department of Ecology to find out, okay, how do we mitigate your determination of the in-stream flow rule? How can we allow for development to happen in the north end of the county? And so, they gave us a grant and we started to examine ways to try and mitigate the impact of the in-stream flow rule. Out of that effort, started to evolve the topic of, well, you can do what other counties have done in terms of establishing a water bank. So, we then got another grant to start studying, what does it mean for Spokane County, Ponderay, and Stevens to create a water bank? Basically, what a water bank does is it says, you have a piece of property and you have a water right to that property, that you can either use that water right or you can sell that water right. The only one that can make that determination as to how you're going to use that water right is the property owner. And so, we as a county cannot go into a property owner and say, you know what, we're going to take your water right. We can't condemn it. We can't use them in a domain. We can't do any of those things to take a water right away from a property owner. That is their right to that water. And so, it's also their right to determine what they want to do with that water right. And so, some other counties in the state have had similar challenges with closed watersheds and have created water banks that are already in existence. Tittitask County is one of those counties. So, basically, what you do is you, as the governmental entity, being Spokane County in this situation, we can go out and if there's a willing seller that wants to sell their water right, we can enter into a purchase agreement with them to buy their water right. And then, that water right then is put into a trust that is managed by the Department of Ecology, but based on contract with Spokane County. And then, out of that trust, we can reallocate that water right to other properties that don't have access to water. And so, in a very simplistic way, that's what the water bank is designed to do. It does not make money for the county, other than to cover our administrative expenses. So, there's an expense to be able to manage that water right and we can recover that expense, but beyond that, we can't make money off of buying or selling water rights and put it into our general fund that pays for police and all those other services. That fund is isolated to just managing the water bank. So, in 2014, Commissioner Milkie at the time, started to work with Stevens County and Ponderay County to say, would you be willing to look at how do we create a tri-county water bank to serve the needs of all three counties? And their commissioners said, yes, let's explore this. Let's work together and see if there's any merit creating a tri-county water bank. So, we've been engaged in this conversation for about three years, trying to figure out, is there any merits to it? Does it benefit us? How would it work? How would it benefit all three counties? So, one of the things that's critical about a water bank is that, let's say the top of this screen is Stevens County. If I buy a water bank in Stevens County, I can use it on any of the properties in the watershed that flow downstream from Stevens County. But if I buy a water right in Spokane County, I cannot use it up in Stevens County because the water right only affects properties that are downstream from that water right. So, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make it a tri-county water bank because the watershed affects all three counties. And so, all three counties have been involved in this conversation. So, it's been moving along for the last two and a half years, three years. And then, Hearst decision came in. So, what the Hearst decision basically does is the courts, in their infinite wisdom, and I've been very vocal about my disdain for the Supreme Court and the decision that they made, but they used the Growth Management Act, which says that counties are responsible for growth, and under that umbrella, said, counties, you're also responsible for managing water. Well, wait a minute. Water is, by statute, by code, for well over a century, water surface and subsurface of properties of the state managed by the Department of Ecology. Ecology has the authorities to issue permits, has the authority to manage, has the revenue necessary to manage. They have all of that that's been in place for a long time. Counties don't. We don't have the ability to issue permit exempt well certificates. We don't have the technology, the staffing, to do all of the research that Ecology does, and we don't have the revenue stream to cover this. So, the court, in their infinite wisdom, said, counties, this is now your job. Counties across the state have said, wait a minute, wait a minute. This is an unfunded mandate. We don't have the resources. How are we going to respond to this? And counties across the state have responded to it in a variety of different ways, across the board. Some have said to the Supreme Court, fine, we're going to ignore you and we're going to continue to do what we've done in the past. Thank you very much. Have a nice day. Leave us alone. Great solution until you get sued. And if they get sued, there's a good chance that they're probably going to lose. Other counties, because the ruling was done based upon the Growth Management Act, some counties are required to manage their growth under the Growth Management Act, to adopt a comp plan, tell you where you're going to grow at, and all that kind of good stuff. Other counties, particularly rural counties, don't have the kind of rate of growth that really requires that level of management. And so, they are really kind of exempt from having a comprehensive plan and a growth strategy and all that kind of stuff because they're rural counties. So, some of those counties have said, you know what, we don't have a comp plan, we don't have a strategy. Thank you very much. Leave us alone. Well, there's another part of the Growth Management Act that even applies to the rural counties. So, not sure that that's a viable argument, but you know, everybody has got the right to make that decision. So, when the court came down with their decision on October 6th, their ruling, basically what it was, was an interpretation of existing law. Interpretation of existing law has a 20-day window before it becomes the new law. So, in that 20-day window, Spokane County entered in, or we started a program that said, you know what, we want to invest as many property owners as we can under the existing statute. So, our building department was open, in many cases, 10, 12 hours a day. We were taking applications like crazy, processing them. In a typical 20-day period, we might process 30 building permit applications. In that same 20-day period, we processed almost 500 applications. We were trying to get everybody we could through the door, get invested under the current law before the Supreme Court decision took effect. Worked really well. Got a lot of people's problems solved. Some other counties, especially on the other side of the state, didn't do that. And what happened was, the property owners that were in construction on a home, but did not activate their well before the decision occurred, now didn't have the ability to turn on their well. So, you've got property owners that have a house that's built, or almost built, a loan on it, the bank is involved, the builder's involved, the homeowner's involved, got a house, and they can't move into it because they don't have potable water. So, on the other side of the state, a number of developers really got hammered with this. And so, bankers are with the legislators, developers are with the legislators, saying, you've got to fix this. The law has unintentionally hurt innocent people. And so, the Rs have pushed to try and get legislation to fix the ruling that the courts relied on, or the parts of the law that the courts relied on. Senator Warwick introduced Senate Bill 5239 that I testified on, that basically reset the clock, changed the language in the Growth Management Act, and got us back to square one. The House, dominated by Ds, and if there are any Ds in the audience, they'll find me offensive, I'm sorry, but they've been fighting this and using it as leverage to be able to get what they want out of the Rs through the budget process. I think today, there's probably a 50/50 chance that we're going to get legislation passed that will fix Hearst in this session. And that's distressing for me. If they get legislation passed, it will more than likely require mitigation. And mitigation means, if you're going to take water out of the watershed, you've got to define a process for mitigating the impact, which means a water bank. And so, we might end up with a legislative fix that doesn't fix anything, and we're right back to square one with the water bank. So, we're in the process of trying to put this together. There are a couple of other water banks in the state that we're using as examples because they've been tested, but we're looking to try and do something that fits Spokane County. And again, I think this is the first tri-county water bank that'll be in existence in the state. So, that's why we're working with our partners in Stevens and Ponderay County, because they're partners with this in this effort. So, we've had conversations, multiple conversations with our counterparts in the other two counties. We are trying to evolve a document that's specific to our situation here, but it is a process. And so, we've had a couple workshops, we've had hearings, we'll continue to have hearings, we'll continue to have workshops. This is a work in progress. So, at the hearing, I said, please, provide us with input. And one of the reasons why I wanted to be here was to at least give you the information that we're looking at. So, if you have anything that's different than this, let us know. If you're under the impression that one situation exists, this counters that, great, let's have a conversation. We want to get this right. And so, so that's the process we're going through to try and resolve this situation. It's one of the most gut-wrenching things that I've had to be involved with since I've been in office, elected office. I've had people sitting in my office crying their eyes out because they've invested their life savings into a property to build a house on, to retire on, and now they can't get access to water. So, looking at me to find a solution. That's what we're trying to do, is find a solution. I'm a real estate developer, made a life doing this. I'm a strong property rights defender. I've not been, am I now, a strong supporter of the Growth Management Act, because it robs property owners of their rights, but it's the law of the land. So, to the extent that I'm held accountable to defend it, I will, but I'm not going to promote it. This Hearst decision is a bad decision. We had, within a couple days of the court decision, we had a community meeting down at the Board of Commissioners hearing room. That room was packed. Every seat was filled, too deep along the walls, and people in the lobby. That's the most people I have ever seen at the county commissioners' hearing room since I've been in office, now been seven years. Very passionate, wondering, what do we do? At the time, we didn't have a solution. We're working on creating a solution, but we want to get it right. So, we've got some of the best attorneys in the state working on this as consultants with us. We've got experts in the field of water rights working with us, but it's only as good as the collective wisdom of everybody at the table. So, that's kind of where we're at. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm not here to persuade, I'm here to just have a conversation and dialogue. I'll get John in the back and I'll come back and get you three. Is that all right?
Thanks, Al. We've been hearing a lot and it's all convoluted, so we really don't know. We've heard people saying that one of the big problems is that Spokane, Stevens, and Ponderay got together to do this, and now the left coast, as I like to call it, is using the east side as an example of how they should get along, rather than, you know, fight it. And that's, like I said, these are just stories. And for me, that makes sense, it's like we should just be out there dragging Inslee out of the office and go into the Supreme Court. I mean, that's how you didn't feel, right? So, I just don't really understand. So, it sounds like what you're saying is it's really not a process that's fully developed yet. People right now are still saving the property and wondering what's going to happen.
Yes.
Okay. So, there's still a possibility that somebody could pull those Supreme Court judges up and throw them in the bay?
You know, we all live in hope that the legislature, and when we had our community meeting back in October, I mean, we had, you know, Senator Patton, Senator Baumgartner, other legislators that were in the room, heard the stories of the property owners that are going, what do we do? And all of them committed to trying to find a solution to Hearst. And I believe in their hearts, they're working real hard to try and find a solution to Hearst, but they're also in a political process and they only control one of the houses. And so, there becomes a negotiation. And if you'd have asked me in January, whether we'd have a solution, a legislative fix to Hearst, I would have said, you bet. We've got good leaders and they're going to carry the ball for us. Based upon where the dialogue is now, I get 50/50 chance. And if it does pass, like I said, I think it's going to require mitigation. If we are used, it's politics. I mean, people can say and do whatever they want in politics. If in fact, we're the poster child for water banks, then why are there already existing water banks in the state? Long before Hearst, already existing ones because they were trying to deal with the in-stream flow rule. And how do you overcome that and stuff? So, we're not the first to the table. We want to be the best, but if they could find a solution and reset the clock, you know what, we still have an in-stream flow rule we've got to deal with, but maybe that changes part of the conversation. So, but that's kind of where we're at. So, I've got some gentleman over here. I'm going to do my best to get everybody, so bear with me. Yeah?
My name is Gary.
Yeah.
Retired and moved up to California five years ago. I don't know if people here know me. But in the industry, I served for years, decades. One of my markets was irrigation for agriculture in the state of California. And there's a couple of things I noticed there. If you look at this San Joaquin Valley, that used to be the breadbasket of, one of the largest in the world, due to a judicial decision, and a little fish, it wiped out a lot of conservative Republican farmers that were multimillionaires. And they've got signs up and down I-5 saying, this dust bowl created by the federal government. I watched with emotion in your voice and eyes a few minutes ago, that convinced me that this is probably something that's terrifying you and others on the board, if you're very heart, listening to people you know and love. And the same thing happened, or started to happen, in the grave district along the coast, in the central coast, where some college university professors started to look back and figure that the Santa Maria River used to have salmon. And they, then they got together with some lawyers, that was, hasn't gone anywhere yet, but the goal was to get the grave people that were pumping water out of the ground to stop pumping water out of the ground, figure out how to get it back to the Santa Maria River. This is a book from Gilstein College, issues and controversies on energy going into coal, oil, natural gas. And some of the same battles with different raw materials have been used to decimate other raw material industries in this country. What I'm wondering is, it seems as though you would be more than willing to carry this fight on, not only for the present, but for the future, if we had lawyers representing Caper, that were, you know, highly skilled in battles in other parts of the country, to have them come up with alternative plans to fight this, either in the courts or whatever. What are you doing in that area presently and how open are you to working with Caper in that regard?
Oh, we're open to work with anybody that'll help us get through this situation. And this first memo is designed to address the issue about litigation and appeals. And where do we go from here? So, the Supreme Court made its ruling, and so, the only one that can appeal the Supreme Court ruling to the US Supreme Court are parties to the litigation. And they had a time period within which they could register an appeal that would take it to the US Supreme Court. Nobody did. If you weren't party to the litigation, you don't have any appeal rights.
Now, that was Watcom County.
Watcom County.
Do you know why they chose not to?
Because the way the court structured their ruling and based it on the Growth Management Act, they didn't feel like they had an argument that would prevail. And so, they just said, okay, you know, it's a flaw in the law and it really needs a legislative fix. Watcom County can't fix it, it requires the state to fix it. And if they carried it any further, the courts, the Supreme Court, would use the same factual case that was before the state Supreme Court to make its ruling. And none of the attorneys said that you could come to a different kind of a ruling. And so, they didn't appeal. So, who else could sue? Somebody that's been damaged. Somebody that can show, this ruling has affected me and is willing to file a lawsuit against the state for taking their property rights. But you have to be able to be a damaged individual, somebody that has actually been impacted. And the county's not damaged. And so, we wouldn't have a legal basis to be able to make the argument because we don't own property for development. But an individual property owner that might have had water and now doesn't, they've been damaged. Their property has now lower value, they have suffered an impact. They're the ones that could probably file a lawsuit and try and get a remedy. And that's why, remember in the hearing, I said, please, if anybody is out there that wants to file a lawsuit, God bless you, do it. Do it. So, this gentleman, then I'll come back. Go ahead.
If you wanted to drill or build a house right now in Spokane County, what, can you do that or get water?
So, what we did, after we got through the 20 days for the Supreme Court ruling, then we came in and we said, okay, how can we create a permitting process that people can rely on? One of the things that the court said was that you have to be able to prove that drilling your well doesn't have a negative impact on anybody that has a superior water right to yours. That's a high bar. And so, so then they said, well, just go out and hire a hydrologist that'll come in and say, you know, the drilling of your well is not going to have a negative impact on anybody that's senior water right to yours. They'll never say that. Because now, hydrologist has got to take on the legal liability of saying to any of those property owners, water right holders, senior, that we are guaranteeing that you've got water rights and this well is never going to impact you. You know that there are so many things that can impact the water level in the aquifer other than drilling a well. And so, so there's the legal aspect of it. The other part of it is that if I'm a homeowner, okay, to be able to do the hydrology test, I've got to drill a well. Okay? Now, I'm going to test to find out if I got water. Then I've got to get a hydrologist to certify that I'm not going to negatively, and then if they won't certify, guess what? You've got $25,000 to $30,000 invested in a report and you still don't have water. This is nuts. And so, how do you provide a path forward for property owners? So, what we did do is, in all the other watersheds, other than the Little Spokane River watershed, 55, and the others, we said, you know what, it naturally recharges itself. And so, we identified for the consumption use of a house, how much land area does it take for water to percolate back into the aquifer to recharge itself so that you have water that you generate on this piece of ground? And we identified that it was 500 feet between wells. That area will recharge the aquifer and you have a negative impact. So, we adopted that as a rule so that the other aquifers, or the other watersheds, those property owners would have a path forward. And a lot of them have used it. And then we came back and we said, you know what, some soils percolate water faster than others. So, let's reflect the fact that, you know, in the valley, the water transfers travels through the ground a lot faster than on the west plains. So, we actually allowed them for the radius to be smaller, so that we could be as scientific as we could without having to go in and actually do perk tests on every single piece of ground. So, we've adopted that. And so, so a lot of folks are using those kinds of situations to be able to drill wells. The other thing we're looking at doing now is, let's say I'm a family, I'm a parent, I've got 40 acres, and I want to subdivide my property into four 10-acre parcels, and I want to give three of the 10-acre parcels to my kids. Do I have to drill four wells? Or can I drill one well and then serve all four houses off of the one well? I think it's reasonable to say I can drill one well and serve all four houses. So, we're now working on trying to create regulations to help property owners say, here's how we can expand the use of your property and give you flexibility like you had before Hearst. So, we're looking at all of these opportunities to try and find solutions that will move the ball forward while we continue to battle with creating the water bank and dealing with the in-stream flow rule for the Little Spokane River Aquifer. So, and if anybody else has got any creative ideas, I mean, we're putting everything on the wall, everything, exploring every kind of idea we can to be able to do that. I've got Gloria in the back and I've got the lady over here. Let me get some of these and I'll come back over. Okay? Well, I'm going to grab him. Did you have your hand up earlier?
Yes, that was.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, I just had some quick questions.
Yeah, sure.
Is the county open tomorrow?
Yeah.
Because of the Memorial Day? And then also, did you bring any business cards?
I did.
Good.
And I think all of them got my name on it.
And then how do we?
I'll leave them out here on the table.
Do we need to make appointments to talk to anybody, like the county developers or any commissioners or attorneys that represent the county?
Well, yes, only because, you know, we're involved in a whole variety of meetings and all that kind of stuff. And I don't want you to come in and then find out that I'm out of meeting and stuff, but you can call my exec and she'll give an appointment set up. Be happy to talk to you. Be happy to talk to anybody about this and help you in whatever way I can. And if you want to talk to staff, I can line that up for you as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Gloria?
I just wanted to mention that the Department of Ecology says that they want to set up in-stream flow rules throughout our state, which I think is very problematic because when you have in-stream flow rules, as we know, then it seems like the only option is water making.
Right.
And I almost think that that's their, I mean, it's like they want to do that and I want you to mention, why do you think they want to do that? I want you to try to help us understand. I, you know, because I've been in Little Spokane watershed, and it's the most restricted any watershed in our county. And I'm sorry, I don't believe it when they stand up there at your knee and say, if you use the drop of water on the top of Mount Spokane, it's going to affect your water. That's the one molecule principle. Scientists have looked at that. Scientists have looked at that, they don't all do that. It's foolish to say that applies to Little Spokane but doesn't to others. Because my son-in-law drilled a well, it was dry, went over 100 feet, got five gallons. I'm sorry, but this whole scheme, it seems very scandalous, this water making idea with the in-stream flow rule. And it protects fish and the river has rights out. And I just hope that this is not norm and environmentalist pipe training, you know, to try to curtail rural development.
Well, and and from my standpoint, it very much is a political agenda on the other side of the state to limit growth. And what they what they what they want to do is they want to limit growth on the western side of the state and and then apply that that same kind of psychology across the entire state. There's a reason why we don't live in Seattle. We're smarter than that. And so, I, you know, I used to have a condo in downtown Seattle and I had an office over there in the late 1880s. And then I lived here and I commuted back and forth.
1980s.
1980s or 1880s?
It wasn't 1880s.
I'm a lot older than I look. 1980s. And, you know, and traffic was horrible there. And I made the decision at that time, there's not a steering wheel made nice enough for me to spend the rest of my life behind and stuff. But for folks over there, they love that kind of lifestyle. Great, stay over there. But for here, we love the Royal Life Flower, we love the the open spaces, we love the nature that we've got and and we have those dictating to us how we're going to live. I really have a lot of trouble with that. Lot of trouble with that. So, the in-stream flow rule is a political agenda, in my opinion, to control growth. And so, it's it's something that we will continue to fight. At this point, we've no knowledge that Ecology is trying to establish an in-stream flow rule for any of the other streams in Spokane County. If they do, we will fight it. We will fight it. So, yeah.
I believe Shelley Short was one of the sponsors of the bill where anything that is enforced by the Department of Ecology has to go through peer review. This inflow, this inflow stream rule, has it been reviewed, has it been reviewed by peers and been and been certified as something true and dependable?
It 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 has survived multiple court challenges all the way to the State Supreme Court.
Okay, it was challenged, but what about peer review?
Well.
Or coordination?
That passed, which passed, and they have to, in order for them to be able to continue going forward, that has to have peer review, by scientists.
And I think what she's referring to, you know, we have a hydrogeologist who works with CAPER, Steve Nougavaro.
Right, yeah.
He is already doing hydrogeologic studies all over the state for Hearst. And and as you well know, the Ecology has never done the deep earth sonographic x-ray from the the satellite work that they should do to show the layers. Because the water in our area, this is what Steve says, is that you have multi-glaciers moving over the area, scraping and tearing, and you also have Lake Missoula bringing massive amounts of material in. And so you have all these pockets of water and it's at many, many, many different levels going into the ground. So as you know, you can drill a well over there, you can move 100 feet and you've got incredible pressure and water, you know, as you hit a pocket.
Exactly.
That's pretty well established science. So for them to say that there's a connection between surface water coming out of Canada from snowmelt, which is roaring through our town, and the deep earth water bubbling up is is very debatable. Is there any way to get them to to actually show the science of what we have in terms of the layers, you know, which would be a peer review of Ecology says they're scientific? But where's the evidence that that we need an in-stream flow that's gonna affect, I mean that, you know, so you're pulling water out of the Mount Spokane Aquifer, but does it have any effect at all of bringing the level of the water up? The other thing that, I mean, I know you know this, but what really bothers me is that the Little Spokane River comes out of the Lake Coeur d'Alene reservoir. So if they want to raise the level, just put more water down the river in August and September. You know, because the in-stream rule is all about levels of water past two points in Spokane County. So what what have you discussed in terms of?
So I've had the conversation with folks at the Department of Ecology about the new house and and all of that and stuff. So, and and have asked the question about where, how do we get funding to be able to fund that kind of research? No, they don't, they have not done the research. They have theories, but they haven't done the research yet and stuff. So we've we've asked that question a number of times about can we get the money to be able to fund the studies? In one of my, in one of the handouts, I gave a list of all of the studies that have been done so far, but they do not do the kind of stratification analysis that you're talking about. And I agree with you. I mean, you can, you can, you can have two wells that are 50 feet apart and one's got, you know, incredible pressure and the other one's dry. It also depends on how deep it is and a whole lot of elements and stuff. So, and I also had this confirmed with well drillers where I've had conversations with them and they'll say, I can tell you that I can drill over there and I can get water and I can drill over there and I'll be dry. And he says, I make a living at doing this. And I've had those conversations with them about, okay, how do we develop that into a baseline that we can then give to the public and say, okay, here's what you need to do to get access to water? So, it's a goal, we're not there yet.
In fact, can follow up on what I was saying, Steve?
Yeah.
I believe that the panel says that the burden is upon the Department of Ecology that cannot enforce without peer review. And if they cannot prove or cannot have peer review that proves what they're saying right, it's not enforceable. So I guess that should be the question, you know, to the Department. Because what the Department of Ecology is doing is they are taking themselves out of the liability and placing it through the judges to county officials. They place the burden on the counties, knowing that the counties don't have the money to fight this.
No.
And, you know.
I will ask the question and find out. Good question, thank you.
I remember when Shelley did that and this, you referred it up, that's a good point.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good point.
I know that you, I've heard that you mentioned about the, I'd have heard that you mentioned about making new regulations that would be able to help property owners navigate around or through this Hearst ruling.
Yeah.
But my question is, and forgive me for unlimited knowledge of the law.
No, fine.
But, and how the law works, but if a whole bunch of, if a whole bunch of property owners that were damaged, or even just property owners that are, or just property owners or associations that are getting, that are that will be damaged or at risk of getting damaged, that are in counties that are already having to enforce this law, if everyone gets together, pools their money together and hires, you know, a firm, and they all put together a class action suit against the state, do you think that there's a chance that this law could be actually revoked?
Well, I think the law, the, the, it's a great question. And it's, it's actually, I think, one of the courses of action that probably could be taken to, that would probably get you to the US Supreme Court, is a class action suit. I mean, there are a lot of property owners that have been impacted by this decision and I think they've got a right to redress. And so.
Is there, is there well jurors, is there real jurors, is there builder developers if they don't film together?
And nobody has enough money to be able to make a class action suit, that is so expensive.
But Alan, what about, what about your federal attorney? You know, why do you have a federal attorney representing us in our region if they won't take a case like that?
Well, they might take a case representing individuals, the county, like I said, the county can't prove that we've been negatively impacted by the decision.
Right.
But an individual property owner.
To the federal attorney, I mean, then it would be paid for by the process of your federal attorney going through?
Well, the federal, if the federal attorney is going to represent the county, we don't have standing. And so, that's why it's got to take a property owner that has been, has suffered damage. And I'm not trying to be an attorney, but this is how it's been explained to me in terms of why we, we counties have not taken an action against the state.
But couldn't individuals, I mean, isn't the federal attorney's job to defend property owners in their region?
No, the, so the attorneys are defined, designed to protect the interest of the collective population of the county and not individual property owners or individual taxpayers and stuff. They, the, the county is a separate municipal corporation under the state of Washington and so the attorneys are designed to protect that corporation, which represents a county or the cities or municipal corporations to represent that body. But individuals are a different, a different, different set of.
Can I follow up on my question?
Please.
So what happens if you guys have an individual or several individuals actually sue their counties? Then can the county sue the government because, you know?
No, because we're the agent. You really want to, I mean, we didn't make the law. And so if we had made this law, yeah, you could sue us. But we didn't make it, we're as impacted by the consequences of it.
If an individual sues the county.
The state.
Then the counties get sued, they may be like, hey, look at your bust on us and now you're keeping us.
What we would, what the county would do is more than likely, and again, I, I, every morning, I thank God I'm not an attorney. And so, you know, and I don't play one in real life. But the, because we did, if we had made the law, then we would have to defend the law. We didn't make the law. The Supreme Court did. So I think the action is against the state.
Oh, so then suing the county would be illegitimate?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the county would take it to court and would ask for a summary judgment that says we're not liable and the judge would grant it and then you'd be back to square one. So you really need to take it against the state. I got the gentleman in the back and then I'll come back to you, yes?
Yeah, I wanted to say, it's actually pretty good to see Spokane County take some of the water balance testing for the other areas.
Right.
And and you do that because you're trying to use the least impact you can possible to the landowners. What I'm curious about is why you didn't follow up on that with 55 and allow enhanced infrastructure projects in order to make that water balance judgment within Wyre 55?
It's because Wyre 55 is impacted by an in-stream flow rule and the other Wyres are not.
54 has an in-stream flow rule on Shamakam.
But not in Spokane County. The only, the only Wyre we have that has an in-stream flow rule is 55, Little Spokane River. And so we did make that ruling available to all the other Wyres, but not 55 because that's got the in-stream flow rule.
Okay, but you, you still, the reason, if you explain why you can't use the water budget balance process on an in-stream flow of waters, because I've never seen that argument.
It, you know, it's because the watershed has been, the watershed for 55 is basically a closed watershed where the other watersheds are not closed because they don't have an in-stream flow rule.
And that's as of 1976. What was that based on, do you know?
You know.
There was no in-stream rule, flow rule then.
The, the in-stream flow rule was established and it's in here, I forget the date. It's been in place for several decades.
Yeah.
Yeah, and stuff, so, yeah. There was something else, before I forget this, bear with me just one second. The other thing that came up in the hearing was consumption rate. And and there was, the, in the draft that was produced back in June of last year, we had had a consumption rate for cattle at, I think, 12 to 15 gallons per day. And, and, you know, they really are consuming more than 30 to 40 gallons a day. And so the difference between the two was established by the Department of Agriculture. And what we did is we said, you know, let's say 30 gallons go in, they're gonna get rid of some of that and that's gonna go back to the ground and that's gonna filtrate back into the water. So what they consume and keep is the 12 to 15 gallons. So that's, that, so that was part of the conversation, one of the earlier drafts. We've gotten rid of it altogether. It just created so much anxiety and 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 we just said, well, we don't care how much the cattle drink, let them drink until they fall over. That's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is create a path forward for people that want to build their homes. And so, so we don't want to impact cattle or farming or anything like that. So we just took everything related to animals out of the, out of the draft. So that's no longer part of the conversation. Did I answer your question?
That's a good one.
I've got a winner here, folks.
Well, you actually answered the second one because Hearst had nothing to do with cattle.
No, no.
That was a big reservation.
No.
And I wanted to say, would it be possible to do that? I've never seen an analysis, legal analysis that says that you can't do enhanced infill inside a controlled basin. In fact, I know the Department of Ecology is doing a lot of this knowledge.
Okay.
As a mitigation measure.
So.
It's much easier to do and it's essentially less expensive than buying credits.
If, 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 if they're doing it, if you can give me a, a, a source or some way to find that, I'd do the research to try and figure out what are the specifics about their watershed and do they compare with the specifics we have on our watershed? And is there any kind of cross politicization that we can get out of that? You know, it's these kinds of stories. I mean, you know, we're not, we're not the only ones in the state that are trying to figure this out. So there're gonna be solutions that a lot of people come up with and we're gonna continue to try and work to find the best that works for Spokane County. Some do, some don't. So, you know, so research that.
And I'll grab one of your cards.
Yeah, please do.
The last one I wanted to make was the answer to Carter Moore's question.
Yeah.
Why Ecology wants to do this setting in streams flows. That's because the legislature required them to do it.
Yeah, right, right.
That's, that's why yours is in 76, the one that I deal with in Stevens County was put in 77.
Yeah.
Those were the first things. This new development is because of the Wyre bill, which had pumped the money, it's been up requirements since 72, for Ecology sent those. They haven't done it because it's tremendously expensive to do well enough.
So when, when they hit that back up, I'll shut up. I'm a long commercial. Tim, you've been right here.
So, the, the basis behind this is that someone has to be impacted to have standing to file suit. The problem you said earlier is somebody's not gonna spend $25,000 for a study and still may not be able to get a well. Same thing happens with a lawsuit, class action lawsuit, you can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on attorney's fees as an individual or a group and still lose. County government could also prove, in my belief, that they are impacted. So city government is great for us in a way because property values are gonna go through the roof because we can't build out any further into the county to some extent. And there's a lack of availability of homes. Whereas the county could be facing, from what we're hearing from the sheriff, I believe it was a Eighth Amendment lawsuit because we haven't had, and have the prison space. So you're losing revenue because builders aren't developing. The county is losing tax revenue plus other development revenue. So if counties got together and filed an appeal because of the negative impact to county revenues in the legal obligation of the county of public safety and the revenues, the lack of revenues to do so, I would think the counties could have standing and collectively take the tax revenue and protect the taxpayers.
Let me, let me, let me take that argument. Are you operational on that?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap this up then. First, second week in May, county commissioners from across the state had a spring/summer retreat where we are dealing with the financial model for county government in the state of Washington is broke. The, there are counties, there's probably about almost a dozen counties, maybe not that many, but close to it, that don't have 24/7 coverage for sheriff because they can't afford to keep a sheriff out on the road 24/7. There are probably about a half dozen counties that are one criminal prosecution away from going into bankruptcy. The model does not work. And part of it's growth management, and I've said this, no offense to my, my partners at the city, but Growth Management Act basically gives cities the right to annex retail centers. And when you're in a recovery, consumer journey recovery, which is what we've been in since the recession in 2008. the recession in 2008, that means a lot of people are buying houses, boats, cars, and all that kind of stuff, generates retail sales tax that goes into the coffers to drive city services. Well, when all those retail centers have been annexed by the city, the county doesn't have that revenue anymore. And property taxes are capped at 1%. And inflation is outpacing that as well as wages and a bunch of other stuff. So the model across the country just doesn't work. I mean, mathematically, it just doesn't work. And so, all counties are struggling. And so, at this retreat, we were trying to figure out, how do we, how do we solve this? How do we address this issue? And how do we get the state to do what the state is required to do, like indigent defense, which they're now cutting back funding on? Making sure that we provide adequate housing for mentally ill, other than my jail, and a number of other things that are...
McNeil Island sent...
What's that?
McNeil Island sent a right to Spokane here.
Yeah, so, well, and so I got a jail that was designed to handle 462 inmates. In the month of March, I had 1,033. Two and a half times what that jail was designed to do. And so, the model just is, it needs to be fixed. And there's little chance that that's gonna happen. And so, we're trying to figure out what to do. But the challenge, and we had the conversation about, you know, does counties gather together and try and litigate Hearst? The challenge is that the courts will come back and say, "Well, yeah, you can't develop here, but you've got all this other stuff." So there'll be a shift in development activity from 55 to the rest of the county. So have we really suffered? No. But the property owner, the 1055, that individual has had a negative impact. And we've had people that have now come to the county assessors and said, "I don't have access to water, my property is not worth what it used to be, I want you to adjust my property taxes."
Right.
And I want you to adjust them down because my property's not worth as much.
So there's anything without water.
They're right.
Zero.
Yeah, they're right. And so, so it's very entwined conversation. I want to really thank you for the opportunity to come in and sharing the information with you, having the conversation. More to come. Stay tuned, more to come. If you have any idea, give me a call. Give me a call.
Thank you very much, George. Thank you very much.